Everybody, welcome to the May 16th, 2023 City of Angels City Council and Meeting. Rose, could you be role?
Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Vice Mayor Monocada.
Present.
Councilmember Tuscornia.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio is absent. Councilmember Serrato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Thank you, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our report out of closed session, on item A, there was no report, and item B has been continued to another meeting. Taking us to item four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Anybody have any amendments? Or concerns about the agenda as it's posted, Rebecca? Any members of the public? Do we have anyone online with us tonight, Rose?
Not yet.
Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda as posted.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a 401, Rose. Item number five, public comment. The public may address the council on any items of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers would be limited to five minutes per person. Anybody here have any public comment for us? And there is still nobody online. So we have no public comment tonight. Moving on to number six is our consent agenda. We have two items on consent, the draft minutes from May 2nd and the accounts payable. Anybody have any reason to pull either of these items? And any members of the public have any reason to pull either of these items? Ready to get back? Looking for a motion for consent.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
So thank you. Okay, our regular agenda. Our first item is item A. We are receiving a presentation from the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, the CBB, and the Film Commission. So welcome.
Thank you. Just come sit in the hot seat over here, please. Fight in the bathroom.
We don't fight.
I'm like, girl power. It's like, wow.
We're gonna cry right here, please.
What you said is the women that make things happen around here. Thank you, thank you for having us. I would like to just start by saying the partnership with the city is brilliant. We so enjoy being at the museum and running the CDB out of the museum. It makes total sense. I'd like to say it makes total sense for the CDB, one of our offices, the main office, to be in Angels Camp. We are right down the road from Wyndham. We just have over 300 hotel rooms in this whole county, and 200 of them are right down the road. Makes total sense for us to be here, and we enjoy seeing those visitors. I want to thank you for also having Rebecca sit on our board meetings as a representative from the city. It's been brilliant. It's been great to have somebody who is active and really campaigning for the city. Doesn't let us forget it. And also for Caroline, and Caroline with the museum has been brilliant. Actually, I think when I get to museum portion, we've made some real, really big strides in the foundation, and that's been working much better. We do have huge numbers in this presentation, and they were even bigger. These are 2021, and I'll give you 2020 numbers. I don't think those are going to last, going back to the CDB and just to our visitation. If you look at the CDB website, we're getting 50% less people than last year looking at our website. We are also seeing a reduction in the amount of people that we've had at the museum. So we have a few things to combat that that I would like to talk to you tonight about. I'd also love to talk to you about going forward. And the park, that's going to be a huge draw, I think, for people. Mac and the new museum is going to be huge for us to then have two attractions to market here in the county, in the city. And I also want to talk to you about these artifacts and actually getting that ball rolling too. And then I'll deal with the budget separately. I did actually include our financials. I know there was a lot of questions about the CDB financials, so if you have any questions, I wasn't going to address them, but Rebecca gets those on a monthly basis, a couple of days before our meetings. And if you had any questions, I wanted to be able to have Jessica answer them. So if we can get started, ultimately, this is our mission statement. And this presentation really does reflect our mission, vision, and values. If you'd like a paper, oh, you all have paper copies? Great. Then support the city while serving our visitors and local community to the best of our ability. We aim to review to keep revenue and investment coming into our city to help support public safety and expand our marketing potential. The next slide is, just really shows you countywide, and most of our figures are countywide. Obviously, they include Angels Camp. But tourism is the largest industry in the county, and next to government, it creates the most amount of jobs. So if you look at heat leisure and hospitality, you know, put in the retail trade, you know, obviously, it's going to be a huge industry for our city and county. The next page shows, these are figures from Dean Runyon. I apologize, for some reason, I have a brain malfunction when I keep thinking it's Donovan Bradstreet, who are also an accounting firm, but it's actually Dean Runyon and Associates. And this shows that we've just had a constant climb with our numbers, visitation. This is total travel spending in Calaveras. And this is, again, these numbers are done by Dean Runyon and Visit California. And you can see where we completely bottomed out in 2020 with the pandemic, and how we started to bounce back even higher than we ever were in 2018, and then 2022, we were off the charts. So the next slide shows you that our 2021 travel-related spending in the county and city was 216 million in 2021. Last year, we were 246 million. We have never seen numbers like that, that I've seen. So the tax revenue was 17.5 in 2021. Last year, it was 19 million, and we just had over 3,000 people employed that they factor that we employ in tourist-related industries. If you look down, you can also see Toolumne, and we were 25 million behind them in 2021. And last year, they did 251 million, so we were only 5 million behind Toolumne. And they, just so you know, they have three times the budget we do, the marketing budget. And they're on the doorstep to Yosemite, but besides that. No, those are grapes here. And then I also put Amador numbers. They don't really compete with us. I really do see, you know, we want to do as well as Toolumne. On the next slide, you'll see accommodations versus food service. We do still get a lot of people that just come in and eat and go home. You'll see that Toolumne actually has a lot more in accommodations. I didn't put in any 2022 numbers because they're pretty much exactly the same as these. And then the next slide shows you the county versus the city TOT. Again, we were off the charts in TOT last year. For the county, it was 2.728 million. With the city, we were up at about 1,400,000. We did see that dip, obviously, for, even though the city did increase the TOT, but because of COVID, we did see a dip. And who knows? I mean, we will be over, hopefully. I'm assuming that we'll end up with about 1.1 million for last year. The next slide, TOT. We actually tried to show the finances in a very simple way here. We spent 12% on overhead, 63% on marketing, and 25% on payroll. That was the easiest way for us to break it down so you can see where we spend the money. Overall, we have 400 from the county and 88 from the city. So that works out to be about 58,000 for the overhead, 122,000 for payroll, and marketing is just over 307,000. So if we take the marketing budget, we break it down. Shows the event and promotion and social media. We spent 18% of that 63% on event promotion and social media. Data tracking, Rebecca is, this is something I really want the city to use. This is called Placer AI, and we have to contract people via their cell phones. So we have an accurate count of who comes into our county, where they come from, how long they stay, and where they went before and after they actually went to the one location that you're looking at. We do a lot of fam trips, which are familiarization trips. We work with Visit California as well as our Hookline and Thinker, who is our digital marketing team out of San Francisco. They send us writers. I have five photographers coming to stay at the Black Bear Inn, and they will be covering the Frog Jump. And they are also, it's a competition. We made it into a competition. It's a great way to get content. So I'll have over 100 excellent professional photographs of the city and county by next Monday. Website, software subscriptions, and constant contact, that's 21%. Print at ER Radio Museum and Film Commission is 24%. And I really wanted to spend a little bit of time to tell you about our visitor's guide. We go out and raise that money. So I'm going to say 62, or is it 65,000?
66,500.
66,500? 66,500, so it's kind of big. We go out and raise that for advertising and listing. And if you want to be in the guide, you pay to be in the guide. And there are two reasons for that. It's not a lot of money, but it also gets people to interact with us and actually return the phone calls so that they want to engage and be a part of something that we hand out. We do make 55,000 copies of that visitor's guide, but I just want to make sure that you know that we don't use TOT for that. And the reason being is we feel that the TOT should be spent on everybody. And if you want to pay to be in a booklet, then that should pay for itself, and it does. The next slide does show you Placer AI. It's a data collection agency that tracks our visitation by mobile phone usage. For the first time, we have an accurate count of how many people come into the county and city, where they visited, how long they stay, and where they came from. And now we can target our marketing dollars more effectively.
I have a motion on it.
Sure.
So under employees, that's employees of, just all employees of Cal, within Calaveras?
Within Calaveras, yeah, and their movements. Ultimately, you can structure this any which way you want, and you can actually, for example, the fairgrounds. What's so interesting is when you, we have the, it's called a point of interest, and you actually make a data, I mean, a digital sort of outline of the area that you want. That becomes a POI, and when you go onto this website, you can actually look at that POI and go back as far as 2017 to see what the numbers are, but also to see where those people came from. So for example, on Irish Days, I see a lot more people from San Jose for Irish Days than the fair, where it's much more Sacramento-based. I mean, you could get a lot there, I'm not saying that, but it's just so interesting to see who comes.
Right.
And we're finding.
And where you can target market.
Exactly. So the dollars that we are spending are going where they should.
All these little squiggly ones next to it, Rebecca, for me to decipher who's the...
Sorry, I can actually blow that up. And actually, what I would love is I love the city to use this. Because also, this tool, which I don't use, it's very expensive. We decided to spend the money on it because the board decided that this was an important tool to have. But I think it's an important tool for the city because they can tell you for your vacant stores what makes the most amount of sense to put in those stores. So, you know.
And for businesses here, I think, you know, businesses struggle in trying to figure out, how do you get more feet in my door? And so they can guess where they should market or where they should, you know, kind of put their marketing dollars. But you can actually show where people are coming. And so you might think they're coming from, you know, San Francisco or, you know, Contra Costa County or wherever, and the reality is maybe for your particular store, they're coming from Modesto, or they're coming from, you know, the Sacramento area. So there actually was, is someone on the board, and she has been spending a lot of marketing dollars specifically targeting this particular area because she thought this is where we're going to get it, only to come to find out, nobody actually comes from where she just spent all her marketing dollars. They've all come from over here. So it's...
Because of this?
She has been looking at this. This also helps us when, like, we have the Highway 49 discussion. And, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about how many people really come in on that side of town. There are 740,000 visits to that Frog Town Plaza in a 12-month period. That's not a small number. So when you think of that number of trips for vehicles on Highway 49, and why everybody gets so frustrated with the traffic flow right there, that's why. That's a tremendous amount of traffic there. We can also identify how much traffic is going, you know, to Green Horn Creek in Angel Oaks. And it helps us identify, you know, which roads are going to, are being used more. So not only does it help from a marketing perspective, it also helps us identify where the trips are happening in terms of where our infrastructure is at. It's interesting to also maybe find out how many, so we know how many people are going to that shopping center, but how many people are making it down to the theater or downtown. Correct. So you can backtrack. So I would be, and also, the other thing is, so let's say they come and they, you know, they hit the pickle porch. Well, then where do they go when they're done at the pickle porch?
And that's, and that's what you can see, is like, they go to Sonora to whatever shopping. That's what we want to bring in, but...
Right, we want to keep them here.
Yeah.
Right, so those would be the types of business sectors that you would want to identify in terms of business attraction to try to get those particular revenue leads back over here.
So the next slide, is there any more questions? Okay, so the next slide is just general information. I mean, the most brilliant part about being at the museum is that we're able to keep the museum open seven days a week. The one thing that I would like to point out on this is that we did have 10,657 visitors in 2022 that we greeted personally, which I think is impressive. The next slide is our guide. Actually, a friend of Marina sent her this one at the San Jose, no, I'm sorry, Oakland Airport. Our guide's going to look very different this year. We'll be coming out with it shortly with a new look. We just want to kick it up a notch and make it look more like a magazine and be more informational. And because we have such a good buy-in now, we think we can actually afford to do that. So we have a Daniel Talent, who I know is helping Rebecca, who is a talent, and he's helping us with our new current guide. On the next page, you'll see we have the... The Facebook, we've got 56,000 followers, on Instagram, 7,800. You can see last year, our total media reach was 362,000. Profiles, 15,800, and new social media followers, 2,400. I'd like to see those numbers go up, which takes us into our next slide. Hookline and Thinker is who will be hired to run our digital media. They do our social media as well as, as they are our connection to all the travel writers in the area. They have delivered 32 stories of great content. They also came up with the idea of the Frogs for All Seasons, so we're putting out a calendar every year. Two reasons. I really want people to start getting to their events because after COVID, it seems like you haven't been, oh, we're going to cancel that. And I wanted to keep, I wanted to get back to where we were. And it's actually, you should see our billboard, I mean, what do you call them?
A bulletin board?
Bulletin board, thank you. Out in front of the museum is, it's jammed, we don't have enough space, and we bought two of them, thinking that that would be enough. People are really starting to get back into that sort of annual event. And I think, you know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, that events are really what are going to be bringing people back to our county. This was the 16 places that we got into USA Today. Gorgeous places to see wildflowers in the United States.
On the events, I do want to say what the CBB also did just push out is a QR code to make it easier that if you're in the community and you have an event, you actually can utilize that QR code, and it'll automatically open a form for you to submit the event that you're having. So it'll automatically be added to the C200.
Yeah, and we also have a new form that you can just log on to. And if you're a business, you can fill out whatever you would like to have advertised. And that's the easiest way to get the information correctly. Travel writers, I love having people write about us as opposed to us writing about ourselves, and it really works out well. And, you know, it's funny because I looked at this, and pre-teen, it was the lady in the middle. She had almost 100,000 followers on Instagram. Kay on the left-hand side has 300 followers on Instagram. This actually, for Visit California, this Kay was in the Visit California Visitor's Guide this year. And we only pay $3,500, and we get a little section like this for Calaveras. And I didn't pay for this. They put it in, and it was brilliant. And Visit California gets a lot of attention. Again, just showing you that we are diverse, we are bringing diverse group of people up here, and they all love it. And we're getting a lot of attention on social media. Next slide. This is the ad that we've been running on the left-hand side. We have, we took a gamble nine months ago, thinking that we should start advertising internationally. So I took out an ad in National Geographic Expeditions. It's very hard to know what the ROI on that is, but what was interesting is at the Outlook forum, which is the big Visit California forum, they were saying that, the British representative said that they've added 200,000 seats from Heathrow to San Francisco from just this year. So I really would, and we've seen historically that the Brits come here more than anybody else. So I do think that's a strategy that we're going to continue. So we, little getaway, we were in Stacktown, mostly because, again, don't want to sound like an elitist, but I do want to go to that demographic that has funds to, you know, come and engage in our stores, our restaurants, our museums, and outdoor activities. The Seventy Journal is brilliant. We've got a lot of traction with them. They actually give us all of their leads. So I get, on average, probably about 300 leads a month from them that we put into our constant contact. Actually, I put in expansion back to San Francisco Chronicle. They didn't do it this year. They were going to do a Highway 49, a big spread, and I wanted to be a part of that. So we budgeted for it, but I ended up using the money at NorCal. And we did, we were in 13 of Northern California's top papers with this ad. And we continue to do our radio advertising. And I'm doing, Jessica and I just finished the latest revision of the CDB budget, and I would like to put more money into radio advertising. And we were doing that before the pandemic, and it kind of slipped off a bit. But now with our events and what have you, I think it's important that we start covering more radio than just NPR. Just to show you that we do sponsorships, I do feel that we need to look inwards and be supporting our events. And we've had a lot of fun. They actually requested us to be at the McCollum Hill Parade because nothing's ever asked us to be in the parade, and all of a sudden, they started, so that's pretty awesome. Tales of Calaveras, again, just giving you a brief on the Film Commission. Teresa Hitchcock, who was our new CEO of the county, used to run a film commission. And we do need to fix our permitting in this county, so I'm really looking forward to getting some traction with this. Next year was as far as attracting people. I do want to do a familiarization tour, which we had actually set pre-COVID with Toolumne, and we need to do that again, to get location managers to come see us and start using us as a film location. I think 88 films have been made in Calaveras, and during the '40s and '50s, it was a huge place to make movies. And then when California sort of became, well, through a series of events, not the place where movies were made, it's actually turning around a little bit now. So I think, you know, the time is now to start pushing that. We did do Tales of Calaveras, and also I did bring in Levi Strauss shoot, which we were able to use some of the implements at the museum. And it's a great book, and I should have brought it with me today. And then just showing you our partners and our strategy going forward into 2024 and beyond is to maintain a delicate balance between our visitors and locals and create an awesome getaway for our visitors without disrupting our residents' quality of life. We do want to expand our international and domestic marketing campaigns, and of course, keep the revenues and investment coming into our city. And the last slide is our work cars, and we maintain those. It costs a lot of money to send distinctive metals to go out and take graffiti off and replace the letters. And this year, we haven't been out yet to paint them, but we will be painting them. Actually, what I find is, you know, it comes with the territory, but you put glue on it, and you blow glitter, gold glitter, and that actually lasts so much longer, and it looks amazing, so that's what you're going to see this year.
Just don't get glitter long.
What, when you inhale it?
Don't suck it.
Oh, no, that's okay. I did just briefly want to go over, if it's all right, if I still have time, the museum budget. And just talk, is it all right? I don't know if this is legal, but we did actually make some updates on it, so can I hand those out?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Rose. So you'll see income. These, the family, the patron, and the individual are our memberships. And ultimately, I expect, I mean, we were, these are very low numbers. I expect we should be around $5,000 or $6,000 that we're bringing to them next year, if not more. The membership has turned around, and I think that we finally have a plan and the personnel to push this forward. You can see the city contribution that we have. We actually are, admissions going down $10,000. We thought that we could make 75, and this was last year, and we actually made close to 80, which was brilliant. But I think this year, we're going to be a little bit slower. We probably will just come in right under 65, do you think?
I think 65 is our target for this year.
And we did actually have to put in a fundraiser in order to make it work for us. And there are a couple of reasons of why, and I'll get to those in just a second. So our total income is 152,800. We do pay Wheeler and Egger to do the CDB, and they do the museum portion for us as well, our accounting. Workers' comp, museum dues and subscriptions, that's ACT, I believe. Building exhibit maintenance is 12,900. Equipment and apparel, this is all pretty standard with the security, grounds maintenance, drinking water, pest, weed control, office supplies, email, postage, telephone. And then we get the zinger, which is utilities. When we signed our contract to our partnership, utilities were estimated at 16,000. And then somebody found a meter behind those buildings, and all of a sudden, we got whacked with another $20,000 worth of utility charges. So you can see by the time that you put utilities, just even the grounds maintenance and security and the bug spraying, we're at 50. So that's why we need to do a fundraiser to figure out the way of keeping us afloat this year. Museum wages really can't go any lower, and we do depend on our docents to stay open seven days a week. And I would, I will do anything to continue to stay open seven days a week. There is no rhyme or reason to how people come. I've been there for years, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, some Tuesdays will get matched with people, and then some Tuesdays, there's nobody, and there's just no way of knowing when people are coming. So we do know that there's a turnover day on Sunday, so we do see a lot of people from Wyndham on a Monday. So there really is no rhyme or reason, and I think it's important that people know that they can always come to the museum and to the CDB, obviously. Payroll processing and payroll taxes and bookkeeping, it's all pretty straightforward. But I would like to talk about the utilities. There are some people that believe that the carriage house has to be like 72, and I want to do some research. And I think even if we were to up that to 74, 75, we would be saving a tremendous amount of money. I'd also like to look at the water because our water bill's like $700 a month, and we have just, none of the irrigation works at all on the property. It's only just that lawn that's out in front of the carriage house that gets watered. So again, if I could audit that with the city, that would probably be a good idea, just to see if we can bring that down.
Yep.
And I don't think I have anything else unless you have any other questions.
If he has multiple meters, I promise.
So that little building that I sit in, there's a meter behind that that was put in after, it looks like the newest one. So what was happening was the two meters that are together were being read, but then because we went back and sort of cleaned that area out, then all of a sudden, we realized that there was another meter.
And then, and then the other issue was there was a, an issue with CPPA. And so they did a backfill going forward. So they got hit, the building you were in got hit, you know, could have been one more. But it was, it was a in error.
The dead's power.
Of power. This is both, water.
Power and hour, yeah.
So why the water be so much?
I guess they have multiple meter be. You get charged base rate for every single meter.
Oh. Gotcha.
So and I'm sure that at one point, there wasn't a lot of irrigation that was done there. So I don't know if there's a way of figuring out how we can make that work. Otherwise, we're going to have a big party at the museum. Nathan Price here. Thank you for the work. Also, I just want to let everybody know that the little firehouse exhibit is open, and it's really sweet, and it's a great tribute to the Angels Camp Volunteer Fire Department. And we're going to push forward and do a new kitchen and general store display at the back of the pole barn, as well as a new founder, the foundation approved $7,000 for another cement pad in the pole barn, which will really now sort of finish the pole barn so that it's all done and accessible. I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
I just want to say thank you. I feel like the museum was such a forgotten thing, and I think we'd all drive by it all the time and never notice it. You've put a lot of work, and I think you're passionate about it, and it really comes through. And I even read things just online randomly. You have people that are like, oh, stopped in there and pleasantly surprised. So thank you for all of the work that you've put into it.
We did do a memorial the other day for Doug Brown, and he actually had contributed items to the museum. And his widow couldn't find a place to hold the venue, so do it here. And we had just over 300 people. And you'd be amazed at how many people came up and said, I had no idea this was here. I've lived here for I don't know how long, and I bring them to my grandchildren. So we would like to turn it, or not turn it, but just make people know that it's available. No, we do want to do events.
Farmer's market is going to help, I think.
And that will help a lot.
It's going to be drawing a lot of people down.
And we would like to, you know, look at doing Wild West Days or what have you, you know, doing things that bring people. Because just that's the name museum, people thinks it's funny, dudgy, whatever. I I dare anybody to walk into that carriage house and not be blown away.
Yeah, it's truly amazing. And it was interesting, we did the employee holiday party down there. And there were a lot of employees that had never been to the museum. So, you know, they walked in and couldn't believe everything that was in there. But there's been a ton of work that's been done. I I lived in Calaveras County for a very, very, very long time. So visiting, you know, I grew up visiting the San Andres Museum and visiting the Angels Museum. Yeah. So to see everything that's gone into this museum is is pretty remarkable.
I'd also like to talk to you that, because I do think in twenty ten, Bob Pettehome asked us to come down and talk to us about what we would do. And ultimately, I don't know that it wouldn't be fun just to make a false front. Because it would make the building look that much bigger. And not that there would be anything behind it, but it's people's perception. I make the employees, I make, I ask the employees to park above because if there are no cars, nobody stops. But if it's jammed, everybody stops. It's just that perception. So there are ways we can actually hopefully in the future work to to letting people know that it's a big deal.
Yeah, it's to see, well, nobody realizes what else back there.
Yeah.
You're the only museum that I can go to and I have to go again and again because it's like either an addition or you just didn't get it all in on on your first three hour trip. So.
I also say, you know, if you haven't been at the county museum lately, Christopher's done an amazing job down there. And he's dug up stuff out of that basement that, you know, hasn't seen the light of day in years. And it's, again, there are new things there. So it's not just the same, the same art fiction looking at.
Well, there's so much work that no one has seen that you've done because it was boxes and boxes and boxes. I remember going into that back room and just being overwhelmed with how much stuff was in there. And you've gone in there and cleaned it up and just, just gone through a massive amount of items and artifacts. And it's impressive.
Thank you. Should I call you council member?
I call Caroline, but hey.
I really would, I mean, we, going forward, I think a great plan would be for us to sit down at some point and talk about, number one is security. We've had another bid come in for redoing the security. It's outdated. I I don't want to say this, maybe I'm saying it publicly, but also the fire. Signal Service has said that it's pretty much the last time that they can come out and do anything with the fire alarm. We do have another bid for that. We also got a bid for redoing the lights and that's actually part of the audit. Jim Hereford came out and gave us a bid for for doing it. It's a lot less expensive than I thought it would be and I do have the grant for that. It also made a huge difference to insulate that upper building too. So there are things that we could be doing to to make it better, but thank you. Enjoy working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Okay, so we've all made comments. Do we have any members of the public that have anything to say about this presentation that we've received? And then we can't thank you enough. And we will gather up and move on now to item B, which is a presentation from Calways. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you, Mayor Erdin and Council and Rebecca and the rest of the staff for having us here today. So our presentation today is focused around rate increase that goes into effect July one. And there's sort of a procedure on how that works in the in the agreement, but, you know, I I don't think I've met most of you. But my name is Rudy Vacarezza. I work and run Calways with my brother and my dad. We're local business. We do the trash recycling waste collection in Calaveras County. We also do some collection down in North San Joaquin County and South Sacramento County, City of Galt, little community of Woodbridge, like a suburb of Lodi, the community of Hailton. So we're a, we're a small garbage company. We have a yard in Galt and another yard in Valley Springs and a yard up in Arnold as well. So maybe a little history on who we are before we dive right into the rates. So we took over this, we took over collection in Angels Camp in two thousand and thirteen from another provider, especially a large company with connections. Since then, we, well, we took over Angels Camp in Calaveras County. I think it was like May fourteenth. I remember the day actually. It was kind of a big deal. But some of what came with that is kind of revamping our fleet. You know, we kept a lot of drivers. We went through some new drivers as well. About eighty percent or no, eighty five percent of our employees in Calaveras County live in, live in Calaveras County. There's a few mechanics and one other driver that kind of drives up from, one lives in Clinton, the other ones, two live in Clinton. So our employees are from Calaveras County. We recently finished a transfer station down in the Valley Springs area in the Toyon Park. It's something that we're hoping to open up to the public in the next five or six months. This does a public transfer station as well. So you can probably, yeah. So from a basic services in the city of Angels is we do the residential collection. And that entails a three cart system. So you get a gray trash cart, a blue recycling cart and a green green waste cart. So we also do a commercial collection in the, in Angels Camp as well. From a customer standpoint, we have about eleven hundred, I think it's, it was like eleven hundred and one residential customers as of like this morning. So we roughly service about sixty five percent of the households in Angels Camp. Our service is a subscription based service, so you don't have to have our service. And from a commercial customer count standpoint, we have, I think, one hundred and fifty one commercial customers. When I say commercial, it's really customers who have front load service in the city. And that's the big bin with the forks on the front that kind of tips it over that way.
The handy hauler.
Well, no, it's actually a little different. The handy hauler is actually, so each residential customer gets one free handy hauler with their service rate that they pay. So if you're a homeowner, you have Calway service and you're cleaning out your garage, you can get a handy hauler, which is a three and a half cubic yard square bin. There's no lid, no wheels. A fork truck comes and drops it off right in front of your house wherever you want it. You load it up, we come back and take it away. Sometimes we'll bring a front load truck over and tip them. If depending on what's in the cart, if it's like construction debris material, we can't really pack that in our trucks. So we'll come pick those up with a fork truck and take it back that way. So roughly about, I think it's, on average, about half of our customers use that handy hauler service every year. So, you know, there's roughly about four to five hundred, give or take on the year that utilize that service. It's also a service that you can pay for. Many of the customers utilize one, free one, and then they get other services as well. So and we offer that service throughout Calaveras County as well. In up the hill, it's very popular for pine needle clearing, lot clearing. We use a lot of handy haulers up there that utilize that. So from a services standpoint, you know, we have about, I think I toyed with the numbers, but yeah, there's about eighteen frontline trucks that operate in Calaveras County in the Angels Camp area. It's a combination of roll off, which is the big debris boxes, which like are construction debris boxes. There's the front loaders and then there's the automated trucks, which are the residential trucks. And we do operate a few rear loaders, mainly up the hill and doing some like bulk cleanups. So I think you can probably get to the next slide. So some of what goes on is we pick up tonnage, right? So we pick up material at people's houses and goes in the truck, it goes to our transfer station. Then we consolidate it, take it to the landfill and or the recycling center. We operate a state of the art recycling center down in Galt. We, we opened it up. The reason I remember the date when we took over in Calaveras County is it was the day that we opened to receive material on our new recycling facility down in Galt. So it was sort of like two things at once. So I, it'd be, it'd be great if some council members or staff wanted to come down and see it. It's a pretty cool machine. It's roughly like a thirty five million dollar piece of equipment that sorts curbside recyclables. It's a, it's a pretty cool thing, so I encourage you guys to come check it out. But some of what happens is we track these tonnages. And so there's trash tons, there's recycling tons, and there's green waste tons that we track. And, you know, we, we track the tonnages every year. Tonnage slightly went up from twenty one to twenty two and that's usually the case. Some of that is there's an increased customer count. I think we have about forty five more residential customers and about fifteen more commercial customers than we did in twenty twenty one. So that's usually how that tracks. But, but that said, those recyclable tons in that we collect, how it works with the city is that we actually pay, we reimburse the city for the value of the recyclables that go into the blue carts. So we process those at our recycling center, then sell them. And we actually turn around and give a majority, it's like ninety percent of the recyclable revenue back to the city. I think in twenty twenty two, it was about thirty thousand dollars that the city received from that recycling reimbursement. It's like twenty nine something. And then also we, we pay a franchise fee to the city. It's a percentage of the revenue that we collect. And that franchise fee in twenty twenty two that we paid to the city was roughly around sixty. I think it was actually almost exactly sixty thousand dollars. So I just kind of bring that up because, you know, it's sort of, everything we're taking, it's we, we have a partnership with the city. We're, we're glad that we're here. We want to stay here. And, you know, that sort of leads into the next step of, in our agreement, which those things I just talked about are part of the agreement as well. There's a mechanism to do a rate adjustment every year. It's based on a consumer price index model. It's actually not the general model. It's actually a water sewer trash index. So the way that works is we use the December baseline. So from December twenty one to December twenty two, the increase in the index results in the, the then increase that we feel the need that we need to ask for on an annual basis. Just like any business, you know, the price of, to run trucks and to run a business goes up. So we do come in every year and ask for this adjustment with the city. The result of that this year was there's four point four nine percent, so roughly about four and a half percent. And in the rate adjustment packet, you know, there's a whole, there's probably six or seven pages of rates. All the rates from twenty twenty one were, or twenty twenty two are adjusted by this four point four nine percent. You know, I think a way to speak about that without talking about every rate is, on average, like the thirty five gallon rate is going up about a dollar thirteen cents. And the sixty four gallon rate is going up, I think, two dollars and forty one cents. So that, and those, those are our two most popular service. There's only, there's, the ninety six gallon rate isn't, there's only a few customers that even have the large cart, but those are the two majority of it. And as well as the commercial rates are going up by this five percent or four and a half percent. But there's, you know, a hundred different commercial rates. And you could say the forty yard trash is probably our most used service. I think that's going up about fifteen to twenty dollars, can't remember exactly. So this is something we come to every year. We just, you want to come to you guys and, you know, tell you about it rather than just send a piece of paper in. We were grateful that you let us come up here and give you a presentation, however much you can say that was. So, yeah, I think that's probably the end of the slides. But I'm open to any questions anybody has. And I don't believe you guys are taking action on this item today. Is that right?
No, no, it just is the annual.
Yeah.
Here's what they are. It's more of a mechanism for us to make sure that the public is aware within the city that the rates are going up. So we'll have the city eligible for anyone. We did add a section on our website regarding garbage collection and integrated waste. So we'll have the rates associated with this on there as well.
And this is as of July first?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, and we do do a program with the city where you can get a low income discount. Where if you qualify for the PG and cares program, you can come to the city and like certify it with the city that you're in that program. And then you're eligible for, I believe it's about a ten percent low income discount as well.
So because we adopted a customer assistance program for our water and wastewater. And so they already, we do know who those particular customers are within the city. So is there someone we can share that information with on your side?
Yeah, there is. I mean, I'll have to like Sarah and Jeanette, maybe get ahold of you. Some of it's like, if new customers call, it's like, if you certify, I think we did ask like every five years you have to like recertify, I think, but some changes.
Yeah, we require an annual certification, but still we would have that information.
Yeah, I think when we work with Melissa, we just like try to make it easy, you know? We just don't want to be the police necessarily. So we do want the city to at least certify that's a program we can use. And from the cares program, like we're, we're into whatever. We just don't want the, you know, the son using mom's, you know, care program. So we just want to try to avoid that.
So I have a stupid question, Rudy.
There's no stupid.
No, this is a big topic in my household. There's a perception that the trash dumps into the truck and then the recycle dumps in the very same spot. And I have said that there's some divider inside that truck to shift.
You got it.
Can you please put this simple, I am trying so.
We operate a split bodying truck. So there is a sheet of steel down the middle and there's a packer that kind of sits like this. So when it goes in and it's, you know, they hit the recycling button, it sweeps and packs to one side. And when they dump the trash, it sweeps and packs to the other side.
And then when it's dropped off, it's.
It's one tailgate, yeah, like you lift up one side of the tailgate.
Drop off, so I've tried to argue this and I have been shamed in my household because they don't believe me. So I, I.
I'll give you a video on that.
I literally, I Google.
So there are split body trucks.
Okay.
Sounds like a family tree.
Well, you can't give anybody's recycle as much as me because of this very reason. No, the truck doesn't know that I ain't doing it and I'm like.
So you, you come up to the transfer station and you can like, we'll take a video of you dumping it.
Can we do that?
Yeah, anytime, a hundred percent.
That's what we need.
Like we, we just, the transfer station's been there for about a year and a half since we got our final permit, but.
That's the recycling one?
Well, no, that's our transfer station in Valley Springs. And then the recycling facility is down at Galt.
And when did that open?
Well, like I said, I think it was May fourteen, two thousand and thirteen was when we opened doors on that. But we just did a big retrofit and we like tore down one line and built a whole new line. There's like nine optics, which is like some of this like AI laser things. There's about forty people that work each line, two shifts and it's pretty impressive. We put about four hundred tons a day through that machine. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for.
Anybody, members of the public, have any comments or questions for Rudy? Cause I have the stupid one, so now you can say it. All right. So once again, thank you so very much.
I think we're going to sneak out.
Sure, questions, break up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so can you guys still recycle liquor or wine bottles? Why?
Oh, we, we definitely recycle liquor in my mouth.
They just don't take them down at the.
Oh, they don't take them at the recycling.
Yeah, so that's, that's Valley Springs recycling. They don't take them. And that's because, so liquor and wine bottles historically have been part of what's called a CRV program, which is the California Redemption Value Program. So like, he wouldn't get any money for recycling those. And actually like glasses, it's actually a negative scrap value. Like they charge you to throw it away, but because of that CRV on them, that's where you can actually get paid for them. So like at a buyback center, like values for like, you know, them, there's no incentive for that. But actually starting in twenty twenty four, yeah, there's new. So there's a new CRV program and liquor and wine bottles actually will be part of the CRV program. So it will incentivize buyback, buyback places to actually want to take.
What you're saying is it's going to cost more for your liquor and your wine.
Yes, go pass. So like each can, you have to pay seven cents into this program. And then that is to encourage you to take it to a buyback center or put it in your recycling cart. And so like when we recycle, we get that CRV back. And because we have. And because we have this recyclable reimbursement, you actually get it back as the community. So as long as it goes in a blue bin, the community sees it and may not use it.
Yeah, well, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. So I'd like to take a big break, looks like we're leaving, we'll take a bio break and come right back for items.
Not that we drink.
Okay, guys, so we are live, and we are gonna come back with item C, which is the public notice second reading for ordinance five twenty-eight amending chapter sixteen point one-two, changing the expiration dates and extension timelines for tentative maps in accordance with the state subdivision map, Amy, on its end.
And then you, this was introduced, um, after last meeting, and we do require a public hearing for this second reading. We ask that you waive the second reading. And basically, this will put us in compliance with state law so that we don't have to do one year at a time if we have a really large subdivision such as habitat for humanity. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from anybody up here real quick, and then I'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is open. And anybody online, rose?
No.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Um, so bringing it back, we would be looking for a motion at this point to waive the second, um, second reading and adopt ordinance five twenty-eight amending chapter sixteen point one-two.
I'll make the motion.
Hey, we have a motion, Gretel. I'll second. Second, her Caroline, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Passes on a four oh one, Rose. Moving on to item D, this is ordinance five twenty-nine, adding chapter seventeen point oh five, which are SEQA, SEQA guidelines to the City of Angels municipal code. Amy.
Mayor, council members, um, at the last meeting, you actually adopted by resolution the city SEQA guidelines. This basically puts it in the code so that, um, it's sort of formalizes it and tells people that we have it and where they can find it. Um, as we mentioned, this helps spell out who's responsible for the lending SEQA. And it provides a much smaller booklet for people to see how it's been customized to Angels Camp and not our big two-inch thick, um, three-point font, uh.
Right.
Bible that we otherwise have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on SEQA? Okay, we will be opening the public hearing. Any members of the public have questions or comments? We will close the public hearing, bringing it back. So we're looking for, um, the motion, well, to waive the second hearing, second reading, I'm sorry, and the motion to incorporate the SEQA provision into our guidelines. Correct. I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Isabelle's the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes on a four oh one. Item E is also with Amy. This is ordinance five three zero, amending chapter seventeen point four-two for special planning to establish special permitted uses in that specific zone.
And again, Mayor, council members, this came from our individual meetings with property owners for our citywide rezoning, which is scheduled to go to the planning commission in June finally, to start getting that ball rolling. And as a reminder of the last meeting, we asked that you add a permitted use to include accessory uses pertinent to permitted uses. And that's all I had. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
So that change got me?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on this one? Okay, we'll be opening the hearing. Any opportunity for comments or questions? Seeing none, we will close the hearing and bring it back for the waiving of the second reading and the motion for seventeen point, point four-two. Caroline.
I'll second it.
Gretel is our second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh one. Taking us to item F. This is, uh, ordinance five three one, amending chapter seventeen point eight-five for the planning commission procedures relative to the agenda.
Mayor and council members, as stated last time, this is so that, um, the planning commission does not have it in the code as to exactly what they have to follow on their agenda. It gives civil more flexibility. It also removes some items, um, that might get our discussions a little off track and keeps it so that we can better follow your strategic plan and follow the directions that you give us rather than the other way around. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing that, we'll open the public hearing. Opportunity for conversation or question or comments. Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion on item five, that ordinance five three one. Isabelle? For second, second, Caroline. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh one. You're not done yet, Amy? We have resolution twenty-three forty-five approving the conceptual designs for Gateway and Wayfinding Signs in Angels Camp and approving a letter of intent to sign a maintenance agreement for the signs with the California Department of Transportation and authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and sign that agreement. Amy.
Okay, so we've come quite a ways down the road. There already have preliminary designs adopted by Caltrans for the monument signs. We get four monument signs, four wayfinding signs. And before they actually start going out with an RMP, they would like, Caltrans would like us to make clear that we approve of the conceptual designs, which are monument signs, are basically what exactly what we had proposed. The wonderful people at Caltrans would not let us quite go with what we wanted to for the wayfinding signs. They'll let us change colors slightly, a little bit of lettering, but they would let us go quite as far as we wanted to go on those. Um, so they basically want an approval of the conceptual design, one, and two, letter of intent to sign a maintenance agreement. And according to the city engineer, that could cost as much as up to a thousand bucks a year. Um, he thought that was probably higher than possible. But just as you had your presentation and visitor spirit talked about how they have to maintain those golf carts and what they have to do, that's pretty much the same thing we would have to do for our four monument signs. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have a question, Amy. So what is it that's so different about the wayfinding signs from our previous?
We had a little bit of ornamentation to ours, like a little sort of arch that went across the top that maybe had a, well, they are pointing the head and putting in the arc. We had, um, I think some bars were green, they do still have the frog in there. Ours had a little bit more ornamentation, and they simplified these somewhat because they wanted to make them similar throughout the entire county.
This is actually.
Wasn't a size, right?
Did they change the size?
Hmm?
It actually reminds me.
On the wayfinding signs?
No.
I don't think so. In fact, they look ever so slightly, I mean, the one I'm looking at is four by six.
Okay.
And that's still, yeah, fairly good size.
Remember, I was just. And these four wayfinding signs are going at each entrance to the.
The monuments will go at each of the four entrances. The wayfinding signs will come, um, as you're coming into, yeah, same.
Okay.
Not in the same locations, but the same idea that from whichever direction you're coming, it will direct you to visitor center, fairgrounds, the historic downtown. Um, there is one change, we are gonna be making a few minor changes. Like one of them talks about Greenhorn Creek Resort and Worldmark. Well, we don't necessarily want any advertising for people. So while we'll probably touch that Greenhorn Creek Resort, um, we probably will not be advertising Worldmark. Um, but otherwise, um, they're pretty close to what they will say.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Um, okay, Martin said that maintaining the signs was costly, but you guys don't think that things are gonna be costly?
I defer to our city engineer, and I thought it would be up to a thousand dollars a year. Um, we do have metal, but it's like an enamel metal, and there was also some ceramics involved in doing the frogs. Otherwise, it's sort of like, sort of a stacked slate base.
Okay.
Obviously, if there's.
Baby all the time, yeah.
Yeah.
On everything we have.
Okay. So it's just one of the things that, you know, we, we just try to help staff clean it up as quickly as possible. Uh, it's kind of like, you know, our co-complaints officers, you know, broken window theory. You gotta get it off as quick as possible, otherwise they're gonna come back and do it again. So we just.
We've got cameras. In some places. It's very.
And some of them will be, so many people will be able, will have some eyes on them, be fairly close. I think the one that we probably be dealing with a lot is the one that we most want. People coming down for, you know, to get them to come this direction. It's a little bit isolated out there, but that's why we wanted it there, to direct people downtown. I just suspect that we'll be cleaning graffiti off that.
Well, I have lights. I have lights.
Good question.
I don't think so.
We have talked about that. I don't think so.
No electricity, yeah.
I didn't think so. I think that we were told that if we wanted lights, we'd have to do like little baby solar powered ones that people would come in and steal from us.
I would love for there to be solar to not only have the attraction, but to also deter people from vandalizing. Cause if it's lit up, they're less likely to pull their shenanigans.
Yeah, we had a very long discussion about that one day, and everybody said, well, you know, the solar ones just stick in the ground. Um, and then people will come by and get it wrong. But, you know.
Okay, any members of the public, did somebody join us online?
Uh.
You were trying to find friends online, weren't you? Okay. Um, seeing no public comment, I'd be looking for, we need a motion on this for resolution twenty-three forty-five, approving the design as well as the agreement.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
First I can.
Okay. Me, Caroline and Gretel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's on a four one, Alvin is missing out. Item H. And then consider, uh, consideration of resolution twenty-three forty-six declaring the intention to continue assessment for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four, preliminarily approving engineer's report and providing for notice of hearing on June twentieth for the landscaping and lighting district number two. Where's that?
Yep, okay, so this is just an annual, um, an annual item that comes to council every year. So the Greenhorn Creek LLD, um, it's not like, you know, we can just decide and formulate the budget however we want. If you recall, we just went through the whole Prop two eighteen process. So it's very clear what's included in the overall purview of the LLD. And then we contract with an engineering, uh, uh, firm that does an annual engineer's report. We met internally, so we met with the LLD committee members, finance director, myself, kind of to talk through, um, what they saw for this year versus what they would like to do for next year. And so it may not be exactly as it was lined out in engineer's report, but that's because, you know, they're gonna do, you know, this project this year instead of next year, or vice versa, or they identified ways that they could cut costs somewhere. But the gist is all there. So everything was contemplated overall, um, in that, in that original Prop two eighteen, uh, study. So annually, you'll see this come forward. It's going to be, um, based on that Prop two eighteen study that was done, um, based on the limitations associated with the, um, the parcel charges that will be placed on those, um, parcels. Um, most of the questions we get, um, from property owners is, well, how come I have to pay, you know, this amount versus that amount? Or, you know, how come I'm having to pay for two instead of one? And so it's just kind of some education that we have to do, um, on our side. Um, we do, we are working with the LLD also to update their website as well as have information on our website to point there. Um, they've got a good community, um, committee that's put together that they've kind of identified, um, people on that committee that can be those central kind of question people. Uh, so that's taken a lot of load off the staff, um, from constantly having to get phone calls regarding that Greenhorn Creek LLD. But that's really all this is. And so it's just a matter of, um, their budget that was brought, um, together. All of us sat down, we're all far staying within the confines of that Prop two eighteen, um, information, the list of all of the areas that are gonna be contemplated in here, um, and then ultimately what the budget's going to be overall, so.
Did we arrive at clarity on the protected areas? So that everybody knows what's part of that four oh four and what's protected. Every.
Everybody knows.
Any agreement now?
Yes. Not good to do that, yeah.
Well, but I mean, everybody knows that that's not to be required to be maintained in any way, or, or messes to do it, okay?
Um, and then the LLD also is, um, has been working with our fire department in terms of vegetation management plan and, um, what, you know, kind of recommendations would reverse to making sure that they have appropriate clearance for everything. So that's kind of been the latest conversation that we've been having, so. Um, they did get their contracts all approved, that have been, um, that have gone through council. That was for the, um, uh, clean and state maintenance contracts as well as the lighting, um, maintenance or repair contract. So those were both awarded, so they're, they're pretty set up at this point. Um, they identified a finance person on their side that coordinates with Michelle on our side just to make sure they're in step with one another. Um, they're doing really good in ensuring that they don't go too far out. So they're coordinating with us in terms of if they need to get a contract or using a contractor, or if they're gonna use volunteer help, you know, what's the best way to go about that? Just because it's an LLD does not mean it's not safe. So we still are liable for everything that happens in terms of, um, the activities of the LLD or even on properties of the LLD. So we just work with them to make sure that appropriate modifications happen. And if they're going to be using volunteers, that appropriate qualifications occur just to make sure that from a liability perspective, we're covered.
Interesting. Okay. Any questions, comments?
I know there's some work getting done, but I also noticed some areas that need attention.
How many people are on that board? Let's see, some maybe. Oh, I'm sorry, committee, sorry.
Five, five or six.
But these are the five that are able to make those decisions, right? Or work with the city and making those decisions. So maybe, maybe now they'll, they're locked and loaded and ready to go.
Well, and some of the things, um, specifically on like, are you talking about like vegetation management?
Yeah, and just general maintenance, cause I pretty much walk that all the time. And there's areas, you probably see when you drive out that place, that needs to be noise that happen for a while. And if there's other areas that I'm excited, you know?
Yeah, and so some of the things, they have to be like, um, you know, unfortunately, we had all of that grain. And, um, specifically on the kind of culturally sensitive areas, they have to be really careful about when they go out there and start doing that work because they have to almost wait till it starts drying out before they can get out there. Um, because they have to be extremely careful that they are not doing any ground disturbances. So some of the timing has just been, you know, unfortunately, this summer feels like what last summer did, which it was freezing and then it just immediately turned hot.
Overnight.
Overnight. Um, and unfortunately, I think it's kind of during the same thing. So it's not like they're getting a break where the weather kind of dried up and turned, and then they have time. So I, I know they are working on getting all that done.
I did hear today that you listeners won't be doing that center island.
Oh, I'm great. Oh, yeah, yeah. Cause that's the.
Me hi.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I did, I, you know, I really didn't notice it until I really noticed it, and I was like, oh.
Like you grew.
Well, when it's just gonna weaken, it'll say everything that's.
Yeah.
So they're working on that.
They're, yeah, they're running, yeah.
Okay, uh, comments from the public? Okay, uh, comments from the public? Anybody? All right, bringing that back. Looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty-three forty-six and, um, yeah, that's it.
Which is
Call it the motion.
Isabel?
I'll say it.
Caroline. All in favor?
Aye.
Four oh one. Takes us to item I. The approval of funding amendment for the Booster Way capital project and approve the release of the RFP for construction.
Um, okay, so Booster Way capital project is, uh, one of those projects that's been probably talked about for years and years and years. There hasn't been a huge, you know, immediate push to get it done except for the last couple of years when Habitat for Humanity came in. So we need that, uh, infrastructure, uh, updated and up, upsized in order to accommodate the additional capacity on our system. Um, when the twenty nineteen winter storms came through, um, you know, as much as I hate seeing, you know, federal state declarations, there is always an opportunity for especially small, uh, poor agencies, uh, to apply for grant funding. Um, and it opens up, uh, the ability for us to apply for mitigation funding. So the, the there were, uh, there was a grant application that was submitted related to the winter storm twenty nineteen, um, disaster that covered water and wastewater infrastructure. And, um, we've gone through the process and we've talked to, uh, Cal OES, it got through Cal OES and then it gets to FEMA. Then FEMA, um, has a request for information and we respond to all of that. And then it goes through their environmental and that's where it's kind of gotten stuck. So we've kind of held up hope that that was gonna pull through. And, um, we're just at the point where we can't wait for it anymore because we need to get to construction. And I don't know when or if, um, FEMA will ever approve that, um, application. Cal OES approved it. It's just waiting for FEMA, but it could take another four years for them, I mean, honestly, uh, to finish it going through their environmental process in order for us to find out. Um, the other components of that grant application, it's, we're not gonna die on the line waiting. Um, we're, we've already kind of got all of the, um, engineering and right away, um, kind of discussions already done. So really we're just up the construction piece. If we so much as put a shovel in the ground, um, then FEMA will not fund it. So, um, at this point, I think the best option, um, to make sure that we don't risk, um, our project, um, timing with Habitat is to just go ahead and move forward with the booster, um, the, the booster project, um, outside of that, uh, mitigation grant. Um, when we received the COVID ARPA funds, the American, what they call it, American recovery funds, which is called ARPA, um, when we received those funds, they had been earmarked specifically for, um, water and wastewater and essential pay and COVID, um, vaccination pay. And, um, and so that money is available. I would love to use that money for other things that the city needs, but, um, in this particular case, if they're they were kind of earmarked in worst case scenario, we could use it for that anyway. So my recommendation would be, we just swap FEMA grant funding, um, out for ARPA grant funding. They're both federal. Um, that is the, the CIP project already is already budgeted. We're just letting you know, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go after, we're not gonna keep holding out hope for that mitigation portion. If that application does get approved, it'll just, we'll just amend it in terms of the scope to cut off the booster part and keep the other components with it. But, um, yeah, so at this point, we just want to let you guys know, we're gonna swap funding for funding. Um, but we do need approval to go ahead and put that RFP out on the street so we can start getting, um, proposals in so we can hit construction.
Well, yeah, we learned from the county that they're waiting on FEMA, some FEMA funds since twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
So the booster portion is estimated at the engineers estimate is five hundred thousand? And winding this up with Habitat, when do we think that it has to be done by?
Well, that's where we wanna get the construction going. So if we get
Why do I have to say, do we have to do it in the fall or can we do it in the spring of twenty-four? I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate in my brain lately here.
That Habitat, we need to start in like August. They're still doing the trees. They're still doing the trees. They're still going
They have all their
They still have all their underground stuff to do. So we're, we're not there yet. Um, I can't remember. I don't remember when we were trying to get, I think it was Fall.
Yeah, we're already, we're already pushed to next year by waiting for FEMA for boosters. So unless we get it started, we'll be waiting for the next year and then the next year. And that's
With FEMA? Or going out?
FEMA to actually construct. So let's say, we know we're at least nine months out waiting for FEMA at least. And if we're, if we're lucky.
Yeah. What I'm talking about for construction, I think we were hoping of all
They're looking at, um, they were gonna do some groundbreaking for their infrastructure, May to September of this year.
No, but booster win. We want to do the construction. They think we were shooting for fall of this year was our hope. Is that we could get it out there, get it on the street, get the proposals in, do the review, get it back to here to a word so that we could start getting track and charge for all the construction season.
Um, this is construction. So would this not be a construction bid for an invitation to bid based on bid pricing, not a ranking process based on
It's gonna be bid. Yeah, it's gonna be bid. Yeah.
Okay, so the, the price point will determine who we go with, not a proposal, or do I, oh, sorry. Just to clarify.
Lois better.
Um, I'm just trying to figure out, like, could we wait until spring of next year?
I would prefer not to. Um, just because, you know, I don't wanna run, we will be liable to Habitat because we promised Habitat that capacity is available. So anything that's going to push us in, you know, I would rather we just
Have it done.
We have it done. And then we're not stressing about their timeline. Um, because the flip is, we wait till spring, we have another winter like what we just had, and we're not gonna be able to do construction until summer.
May of next year.
Right.
And we are currently on a no net increase in hookups to the system until that gets done. So tomorrow, somebody comes in and wants to do a really great project at four and forty-nine, we have to say, sorry. We can't have that happen or you'll have to wait until this gets done. So Habitat's driving it, but if somebody comes in before Habitat, then we're slow.
I remember when they had a more farming in Santa Fe or stuff and that was disastrous.
Yeah.
Is there any, um, timeline with this, um, ARPA money?
Yeah, we have to have it spent by twenty
And, and this is one of the things you could spend it on. Didn't they have a pretty restrictive, what we could and couldn't at one time?
There was, and then they opened it up because I think, I think they realized that's gonna be a lot of, um, oversight. So at that point, especially for small agencies, they just said, if you wanna take the ten percent, um, do the ten percent, uh, revenue loss rule, then you really can spend it on anything you want. So we just went ahead and said, okay, fine, ten percent revenue loss deal. And so we can spend it on literally anything we want. Um, but we're still trying to keep it within the vein of recovery related to economic development, water, wastewater, infrastructure. Um, yeah.
Any other than Amy, anything with public? Amy, you got anything else?
No, it's just, it's been a dream of mine for twenty years to get that
To get Booster Way?
To give that clog unclogged to that much.
Okay, bringing it back, um, looking at council for a decision on this. You're looking for a motion for the approval of the funding and the release of the RFP vote?
Yep.
Yeah. Greta? Also, I'm by Greta, second by Caroline. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Name to sign. Takes us to item J. Looking for approval of resolution twenty-three forty-seven, which is a temporary, temporary increase of one police officer. Rebecca.
Yep. Um, so if you recall, city council approved a resolution for an industrial retirement for Mr. Stanford on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, but he's still on the books. So that position is still technically tied to, to his, he's still tied to that position. So in the meantime, while we're working with Cal first and waiting through that process, um, we want to proceed with filling that position with a full-time, uh, person that's here. So in order to do that legally, we need to have authorization to get a position. So once that position, um, is filled and then once that retirement happens, then that position will be eliminated a little while away. So we'll be back down to the original count. There's really no additional cost associated with doing this. Um, because there's I thought maybe we were doing here human benefits, but it'd be city benefits, um, through his stuff. So there's, there's really no cost. So it's just a matter of that position is currently spoken for. So we just need a temporary increase. Once the retirement is official and competent, then that will come off the books and we're on our way.
How much time are we looking at that we're, you have no idea?
Could be two years.
Could be three months.
Six months.
Could be six months.
A year. But I'm hoping six months. Maybe sooner.
And you're waiting on Cal first, Cal first?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Have a guy on deck in his spot?
Mm-hmm.
Going through the cabinet here.
He's ready to go.
Hi.
It'll start Sunday.
Fair weekend.
Yeah. Sunday's the best day to start.
Sunday's the one.
Demolition dirty day.
Storm to the wolves.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh. Okay, any other specifications or question from anybody, any members of the public? Uh, bringing it back, looking for approval of resolution twenty-three forty-seven. I'll make the motion, actually.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes on four oh one. Okay, item eight is administration report. Rebecca.
Um, okay, uh, just reminding everybody that the parade is this Thursday. So hope to see everybody down there.
Is it at nine or ten?
First at ten.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, you'll see lots of staff out there getting it all set up and doing, uh, traffic. You should already see the signs out there as well. Um, and then, uh, I will be attending the, uh, fair kickoff dinner on Thursday. So I guess I'll see plenty of people there as well. Um, and then there is going to be the, uh, Fireman's Pancake Breakfast on Saturday and Sunday, um, down at, uh, Utica Park, which is off the grid at the moment. That'll be the last, uh, really the last event that we have at Utica Park, which is one hundred percent shut down for everybody. Um, it's seven and eleven, it's seven to eleven on Saturday and Sunday. And this year they will be having mimosas available. So if you wanna stop by and get some pancakes and eggs and a mimosa, it's a great cause. So we lots of fun. Um, and then, uh, we will start with our, uh, budget hearings this next month. So lots of, uh, lots of fun for that.
Okay. Ready? Short and sweet. Item number nine, council report. I'm gonna start over there with Isabel.
Okay, I attended the fair kickoff dinner with, um, last, last Monday, Tuesday. Um, and then last night we had Labco, voted in a new chair and a new vice chair. Um, the Cal Labco dates are, the conference are October seventeenth, October eighteenth through the twentieth. We had a discussion in direction regarding underperforming districts and then we considered a nomination for the Cal Labco Central Region. And then we love it. And then obviously first coming up, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'll report. I went to the fair kickoff as well. I attended the UWPA Water is Our Gold at Ironstone on the fourth. Um, on the eleventh, I attended the Chamber mixture at Cal Lumber. That was well attended. Um, Labco last night. And yeah, fair is this weekend or week or rest of the month or a half along it last. That's all me. Um, so that's all I have to report on.
Uh, let's see, I had a museum foundation meeting on May fourth and, um, got an update on their bylaws. They had a retreat where they worked on some strategic planning. Um, so we got reports out from that. Uh, they are bringing in an Albert Michelson physical exhibit. Um, it's on STEM and so there's a whole lot of fun stuff going on about that. Uh, but that's gonna be upstairs, I think, in the main building when you come in. And then, uh, let's see, talked a lot about the website, the museum website, and so I'm gonna be attending a meeting tomorrow just specific on museum website stuff. And then they continue to have their, um, lecture series. And they're talking about doing some really fun, um, fundraisers, uh, night at the museum and then the Andrew Gallardo event. Um, let's see, and I think that's it for, for that museum. And then I have, um, have a Central Sierra Economic Development meeting during the parade. Oh, man. That's in the morning, huh? Yeah, and it's over tomorrow. They're not on the zoo anymore? Nope. Oh, seriously? Yeah. Can you miss it? Nice of them. I don't know. I'll look at the agenda. Wow. They don't know it's our fair.
I went to the kickoff dinner and I went to the water show at the Ironstone and, um, my all hazards meeting got canceled. And the parade is gonna be filming. We're serving good cocktails downtown. And, uh, yeah. Be interesting. That's it.
Okay. Um, item number ten, calendar rose.
Uh, DIR WMA, um, meeting is tomorrow. So that's Rebecca and Chris. You did mention your Central Sierra Economic Development meeting on Thursday the eighteenth. Rebecca mentioned the pancake breakfast for the guys. Uh, this weekend, the twenty-third, I have this UWPA. And then obviously we're closed on
I think you, it got pushed till the thirtieth.
Is it?
Okay. Yeah, UWPA is on the thirtieth at five thirty.
Perfect. And then we got a holiday again in the month of the twenty-ninth. Um, you see them again in June, uh, the first, the biggest thing is June fifth, Matt groundbreaking. So, um, I sent you that. Please make sure that you are sleeping for that as well.
And she'll wanna know if you're gonna be there for the groundbreaking and also if you're going to stay for lunch. So just letting you know. Someone else.
I know you all have to
Yeah.
You want to
It's a manage.
I know.
That's the work that you do.
Okay, thank you. Item number eleven is getting a future agenda item.
Um, so really the future agenda items, we have the, uh, budget, um, hearing is coming up. Um, uh, we, I'm going to need to bring forward a recommendation to issue an RFP for our next grade study for water and wastewater. Um, we'll need to start getting that going real pretty soon. Um, we are seeing an uptick in water pump. So, uh, we, uh, our tampering ordinance is pretty uneventful. So there's really no, um, deterrent for stealing water because we're really not gonna do anything. So the state of California actually approved a pretty hefty fine, um, scheme for water pump, which includes, um, stealing water as well as, um, doing what we mostly have issues with, which is tampering with water meters. And so I would like to bring that forward to council to look at getting that approved, uh, as a deterrent. Because we spend a lot of time with people kind of blocks off for me. Because we spend a lot of time with people trying to block off our meters, stealing waters out of our hydrants, stealing water from neighbors. It's pretty remarkable. But right now, the consequence of doing it is pretty much almost nothing. So these fines make it not cost-effective to do it anymore. So that is something that I want to bring forward. We're continuing to look through our various policies and getting those updated. We, including some purchasing changes. And then probably you will be seeing some information in the near future regarding our water treatment plant improvement projects. Because we're this close to getting the state to approve our funding package. So we'll start seeing that moving as well. So that's what I...
There was talk at one time about not just the tampering with water fact, but also waste tying into, dumping into our waste. No, I mean, wasn't there a test that you could do to see if there was gases, humidity out, if there was tampering with the tie-ins for like RVs and the waste and stuff?
Oh, so we, it's not so much that. It's that we have an issue with, they call it I&amp;I. But basically, this was a major problem during the storms. So if, if people, so a couple of things happened. Either people make illegal taps into our wastewater system or there's really old lines, which is pretty common around here. Because we have a very old historic city that we live in. So what has happened is when storm water runs across everything, it infiltrates into those, those lines and it makes its way to the wastewater treatment plants. So in essence, we're treating storm water because it's making its way in. And we, we don't have the capacity to do that. And if we went to the state and said, we need a bigger wastewater treatment facility, they would tell us to pound sand because we are not efficiently using our existing infrastructure. So that is something that we will, we are currently looking at right now. We're trying to figure out ways where we can kind of self-support that mission. So we are working with the state to come in and train staff on the different equipment that's out there. So what they'll do, they'll come on site, a vendor will come on site. They'll connect through the state, will connect us to a vendor. They'll come on, they'll bring some equipment. They will smoke test a section to show us how we, how we can use it. And then we end up getting training. We can buy the equipment and then we can do the rest of the smoke tests ourselves. Those smoke tests are going to be what shows where the feeling lines are. And then we will create the project scope for each one of those of the project. And also align that with game member that needs to happen, road work that needs to happen throughout the city. So those will be coming. We'll have to do some outreach on that because we have a pretty good feeling that if we did a lot of smoke testing, it's just going to look like half the city's on fire. So we'll make sure that we have a lot of kind of initial outreach on that when that happens. But that is something that we need to do prior to the next storm. And then we also talked to FEMA and Cal OES when they came out with their mitigation people to let them know we have some major I&amp;I problems. So we've been looking at some mitigation funding to maybe help us. A lot of the water comes in as storm covers, right? Storm drains, yeah. Storm drains, yeah. The other issue we had with these, this, this two winter storm declarations that we had is so much water came in, our manholes were underwater. And so a ton of water went through our manholes. So that's another mitigation project we're looking at is we actually need to raise the manholes.
Okay, looking for adjournment as item 12. Groll?
Adjourn.
Groll, motion. Second, I... Isabel with her hand up. All in favor?
Aye.